Having a roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
President.
Alderman Spargatus.
President.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Geenan is absent. Alderman Clark.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a court.
Thank you. Do you pledge allegiance? A moment of silence, please.
Our pledge allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. All right, so we have item number five.
Minutes of the January 22nd, 2018 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Any discussions? There are none. Those in favor say aye.
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 Item number six.
Minutes of the executive session of January 22nd, 2018.
Move to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Masses. Number seven. A couple items here. Citizen Participation Plan. The Rock Island Housing and Urban Development Department invites citizens to help determine community use of block grant dollars on Thursday, February 15th, 2018. From 6:30 to 7:30 PM, Longfellow Elementary in Rock Island. Help contribute to the ideas on where this money is allocated. Longfellow School is located at 4198 Seventh Avenue. For more information, call 309-732-2900. We've got library branches are closed. The City of Rock Island libraries will be closed on Monday, February 19th, 2018, for the day, so that staff can attend training. Library book drop-off will be open. For more information, please call 309-732-7323. And then we have the Police Applicant Workshop. City of Rock Island Police Department will have a Police Officer Applicant Informational Workshop on Wednesday, February 21st, 2018, at 6:00 PM. The workshop will include an overview of the department, as well as information related to the police applicant testing process. Police Department is located at 1212 Fifth Avenue. If you have any questions, please call 309-732-2677. And that's it for now. So we have number nine...oh, eight. Excuse me.
Presentation of the 2017 Crime Statistics.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to be providing an overview of the 2017 crime statistics, along with a brief outline of strategies for 2018. All right. So the State of Illinois Crime Reporting Program requires Illinois agencies to report the occurrence of eight selected index crime categories, which are listed here. Murder, criminal sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. State of Illinois then provides that information to the FBI, who publishes an annual uniform crime report of official data on crime in the United States. This slide provides an overview of all offenses when you compare 2016 to 2017. As you can see, we are down in six categories. We are down in murder, criminal sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault, thefts, and arson. We did see an increase in two categories, that being burglaries and motor vehicle thefts, which are property crime. The overall reduction when you compare Part I crimes from 2016 to 2017 was 1%. Crime data that's further broken down into what they're called determiners violent offenses, violent crime. Those three categories are listed there, and you'll see that we had a 10% reduction in violent crime. This next slide will give you an idea of the last 15 years' worth of data, how crime has been trending in the City of Rock Island. We actually have data that goes back 26 years, but I couldn't fit that slide into all this. But you'll see that we've had a steady decline over the last 15 years. The high was actually in 1994, and there was 3,477 offenses. So that should tell you where we've come from. We've had a significant decrease in crime. Next slide, Tim. This slide is similar. It also shows Part I violent offenses, and you'll see that we are currently at this year at 122 reported violent offenses in those categories. The high for this in 1995 was 524 offenses. All right, next slide. I just put some statistics up there. I'm going to talk a little bit about that and how it ties into overall our crime efforts. But I know one of the things I'm going to be asked is, Chief, what contributed to this reduction of crime? And I simply can't answer that and say, you know, that there's one magic bullet that has dropped crime in the City of Rock Island. Rather, it's a series of factors that everyone plays a part in. No doubt, the biggest factor is the hard work and commitment of all the men and women of the Rock Island Police Department. I cannot say enough about the daily efforts of these men and women, who deserve our thanks for the wonderful job that they do day in and day out in this community, often under the most dangerous, difficult, and trying of circumstances. They are each committed to their profession and the betterment of the City of Rock Island. Our success is also attributable to the ongoing support of the mayor, city manager, and city council, and we thank you for all that you do for us by providing us with the necessary resources and equipment to effectively do our jobs. Finally, but certainly not least, our success is due in the support, relationships, and involvement of our citizens within the community. Without the backing of our citizens, the Police Department would be unable to effectively carry out their mission. In the five years that I've had the pleasure to serve as Chief of Police, I am proud to say that overall, violent crime has reached the lowest numbers over those last five years when you compare it to the 26 years of available crime data. Our successes are based upon highly focused strategies that target drug trafficking and violent offenders. To that end, I have reorganized the department to provide more resources so that we can target those individuals, and we will continue to do so going forward. This slide reflects those successes with our assignment with Officer to the Drug Enforcement Administration Task Force, our Tactical Operations Unit, and the number of federal indictments that you'll see listed there in 2017. Forty-nine is a amazing number of federal indictments that the City of Rock Island has produced, that the crimes have been taken federally. I've never known us to ever exceed that amount. It's outstanding work. Those are long-term investigations that take a lot of effort and resources, and very successful in those prosecutions. All right, next slide, Tim. I just want to briefly touch on the strategies and goals for 2018. As you're aware, in April, I'll be coming back to the council with further detail about strategies related to shots fired. Work is being conducted on several fronts related to shots fired, including investigative strategy, state and federal cooperation prosecution, and the further use of technology to assist us in these types of investigations. Burglary reduction, stolen vehicle reduction, those two are pretty much synonymous with one another. Those are, of course, the two categories that we went up in this year, and you're all well aware that we had a strategy this past summer about the Lock It Up Campaign, where we teamed with other municipalities to get the word out about locking your vehicles, locking your doors in your house, things of this nature. We know that around 85-plus percent of cases involving burglaries to vehicles and stolen vehicles are occurring because the vehicles are left unlocked or someone leaves the keys in the vehicle. In conju...again, in conjunction with the other municipalities, we initiated the Lock It Up Campaign to bring awareness to the issue. We did see some successes with that, but we also seen that the motor vehicle thefts began to increase, so we need to look at new strategies and expand that program further. Now, I'll touch on our community policing initiatives. City of Rock Island Police Department has a long history of a high level of commitment towards community policing initiatives, and we will continue to do so moving forward. With all that being said, these strategies are going to be impacted by available manpower and resources that we have within the department. We are currently down, operating below our authorized manpower levels since early 2017. This is in no part to not wanting to hire to fill a position. We simply could not get academy space. You had a new academy that was supposed to be opening in Decatur, and the old academy in Champaign was supposed to be shutting down. Well, there was problems, and then there was class size problems, and it created a situation where we could not get anybody into an academy class. Matter of fact, at one point, I think we were 177 on the list, trying to fight for one position to get somebody hired. So, somebody else took it ahead of us. So, but with that being said, getting recruits into the academy, we do have slots slated for the end of April and the beginning of May for two academy classes to send new recruits through, but it takes time. There's 14 weeks of training at the academy, followed by 16 weeks in the FTO program. So, while we're happy to have them, it's going to take a while to get them trained up and ready to go out on their own. And so, some of these strategies that we look at are certainly manpower-dependent, and we have to have adequate resources in order to do them. So, with that being said, that's the end of the presentation. I'll take any questions or further discussion that you have.
Very good report.
Thank you, Chief.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
All right, item number nine.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on a request from Thomas Fitzpatrick of Storage of America for a special use permit to operate an anterior-only self-storage facility at 2832 Fifth Street.
Okay. So officially, close the regular meeting for now? And is there anybody that would like to open a public meeting? There's anybody who'd like to come up and speak about this topic? In favor of?
Mayor Tomes, City Council. My name is Charlie Armstrong. I'm an industrial specialist with NAI Rural Commercial Company. I'm here to support the special use permit for 2832 Fifth Street. At the current time, this building is I-2 zoning, which in most cities would normally be okay for any lesser use, but in Rock Island, that requires a special use permit for self-storage. I represent the current owners, Coachman Joint Ventures. The property is a multi-tenant industrial facility. It's about 144,110 square feet. There are currently only two tenants in the building that occupies about 62,000 square feet, leaving 81,000-plus square feet vacant, or about 57% of the building. This has been the state of the building for the last 10 to 15 years. We've had the market...the property on the market for sale, or leased for that period, but the property really has a lot of functional obsolescence to it. The vacant portion is predominantly 14-foot ceilings. There's not enough truck docks for normal industrial uses. Of the 81,000-square-foot of space that's vacant, 30% of that is old dated office, which is way too large a ratio for the office to space. We currently have a buyer, which is Storage of America, that wants to purchase the building, invest a significant amount of money in the building and the community, and I think it's a great adaptive reuse of a functionally obsolete building, and certainly would probably be the highest and best use for this property. So, I would urge you to vote in support of the special use permit.
Charlie, is there a form there you can put your name in?
Yes.
Please, thank you, so we have it for the records. And then, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this? If not, is there anybody who would like to oppose? You want to speak in favor? For? All right.
My name is Tom Fitzpatrick, Storage of America, the applicant, and thank you for having this public hearing today. Storage of America is looking at investing approximately $1.8 million into this facility in Rock Island, rehabbing it, refurbishing it, and reconditioning it for a climate-controlled storage facility that people can drop off their things, move them to their storage facility, and move them back out in accordance with the ordinance. We need to reply for the special use permit. So, I think Charlie gave a nice overview of the uses that are currently there, and we would be having approximately 57,000 square foot of climate-controlled storage, occupying about 81,000 square foot of the facility, and the rest being the existing buildings. So, if there's any questions, I'd like to have the opportunity to speak on any issues negative after the end of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. If you don't mind, you could fill that...put your name in that on that form also, please. Appreciate it. If you need it for the minutes, get spellings right. Anybody else for in favor? Anybody opposed that would like to speak? No one opposed? Council have any questions at this point? Okay.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, could we have someone from the staff come up and speak on this? Maybe Chandler or someone. I'm sure they've investigated.
Yes, sir.
Yes. As far as the staff, you've looked into this, correct?
Yes, we have.
Okay, what's the staff's opinion?
We agree with this use. It is an older facility that does have limited uses because of the low clear height and the age of the facility. To have someone come in and make an investment in this property, I think, is a good thing. It keeps the two tenants that are currently there, so we're not pushing anybody out, which is a good thing. We're actually lighting up the facility, if you will. I believe the expression, or was it 87...81,000 square feet of it will actually have life to it, which is a good thing. It does take indoor storage and put it into an industrial-zoned area, which is a good thing. It doesn't put it right on everyone's front door or anything of the sort, so it's a good use for it. Staff has reviewed it. Staff has met with them. As you see on the back of the recommendation of the memo, there's some recommendations talking about employees, hours, availability, no-hazard materials. It ends up being a really good opportunity for us. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does the applicant agree to all of the terms requested by staff? Okay.
Okay. If there's no further questions, we will close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Mayor Tomes will close the public hearing, reconvene the regular meeting, and entertain a motion.
Move to approve the special use permit as recommended, subject to the stipulations as stated in the report, and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion?
Just want to say thank you to the applicant. It's a major investment. Thank you for choosing Rock Island. Happy to have you.
Appreciate that. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargatus.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 10.
A resolution honoring the enduring sacrifice of Echo Cole and Robert Walker, and a commitment to the recognition of the dignity of all work. A moment of silence will be observed.
Alderman Parker would like to read this resolution, so...
I've also asked for members of the Rock Island County NAACP and members of the AFSMI Local 988 to come here tonight. It's relevant to both of those parties. If you want...do we have an actual printed resolution?
No.
No, okay. So, thank you for being here, and we appreciate your support. Resolution. Whereas civil rights and workers' rights are inextricably linked, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. noted in 1961, when he said, quote, "Our needs are identical with labor's needs: decent wages, fair working conditions, livable housing, old age security, health and welfare measures, conditions in which families can grow, have education for their children, and respect in the community," end quote. And, whereas the parallel struggles of those two movements were forged together in the 1968 Memphis sanitation workers' strike begun by city sanitation workers who had endured years of poverty wages, mandatory unpaid overtime, and disrespect, and which grew to embody the broader struggle for civil rights and personify its call for dignity for all workers. And whereas the Memphis sanitation workers were galvanized by the tragic death of Echo Cole and Robert Walker, who were killed on February 1st, 1968, when they sought shelter from the cold rain in a malfunctioning garbage compactor and were crushed to death, inspiring them to take action by walking off the job and seeking to join Local 1733 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI. And whereas Memphis Mayor Loeb refused to meet with the strikers and hired strikebreakers to undermine their efforts and subjected them to police brutality in the form of mace, tear gas, and billy clubs as they peacefully marched. And whereas the resolve of the courageous sanitation workers only grew in response to the city's opposition and gained the support of citizens throughout the city and national civil rights leaders as thousands began to turn out for rallies, heartened by Reverend James Lawson's words, quote, "For at the heart of racism is the idea that a man is not a man, that a person is not a person. You are human beings; you are men; you deserve dignity," end quote. And whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. first visited the Memphis strike on March 18th, 1968, speaking to a crowd of thousands, and he committed to return to the city until the strikers' goal of union recognition and dignity for workers were achieved. And whereas Dr. King's assassination in Memphis on April 4th, 1968, only intensified the strike, as Mayor Loeb still refused to meet the workers' terms until a silent and peaceful march through downtown Memphis led by Coretta Scott King was joined by 42,000 supporters, igniting a national cry that workers be heard in their demand to join the union, leading to the strike's end on April 16th, 1968, with a settlement that included union recognition and wage increases. Now, therefore, that the City of Rock Island will observe a moment of silence to honor the enduring sacrifice of Echo Cole and Robert Walker, and will ask all citizens to reflect on the ceaseless contribution to our nation by workers from every race, gender, and ethnicity, and to commit that our recognition of the dignity of all work must be accompanied by support for policies that guarantee dignity for all workers. Be it further resolved, that even as we take the opportunity of this anniversary to reflect on how far we have come as a nation in the past 50 years, we will also use this time for candid assessment of how far we still have to go if we are to realize the dreams of Dr. King, of Echo Cole, and Robert Walker, and of the brave Memphis sanitation strikers, whose legacies will remain unfulfilled until we create jobs and economic opportunities for all, eliminate poverty, and end systematic racial discrimination. Adopted this 12th day of February, 2018.
Okay, thank you. Do you need a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Oops, skip. That's fine. I forgot they asked for a moment of silence with this also, but as would...
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Need a roll call, please.
Well, I just...I guess I would like to say that I'm very proud of this council for supporting this resolution, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargatus.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 11. Yeah, actually, there was a request for a moment of silence in regards to this, so I'll honor that request. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And thank you to all of our Ask Me employees that work here in the City of Rock Island. Your work is very much appreciated.
And thank you, NAACP. For Linda and NAACP, we want to thank you guys also. Ask Me and the NAACP has moved this country forward in the right direction, and so thank you guys for all that you do.
Thank you. And let me just say, I am so proud of you guys. It was the one time we're sitting here saying, "I don't have anything that I'm scheduled to say," but I was dying to say it. And congratulations. Thank you so much for this resolution. It means a lot, not just to black people or to people who are in unions, but to everybody. We all deserve respect. We all are equal, men, women, and children. Those are the tenets that underlie the civil rights movement and the labor movement. So again, thank you so much, and kudos to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11.
Claims A through E. A, Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $13,573.20 to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois for illegal services rendered for the month of January 2018. B, Report from... B, Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $50,500 to Broadspire of Atlanta, Georgia for workers' compensation claim. C, Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $15,104.40 to Broadspire of Atlanta, Georgia for workers' compensation claim. D, Report from the Information Technology Department regarding payment in the amount of $44,201.78 to Harris Computer Systems of Chicago, Illinois for the North Star Utility Billing Software Annual Maintenance Contract. And E, Report from the Information Technology Department regarding payment in the amount of $56,609.11 to Harris Computer Systems of Chicago, Illinois for the GEMS FMS, HRMS, Financial and Human Resources Software Annual Maintenance Contract.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments as recommended for claims items A through E.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on those? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargatus.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried. Claims F through H. F, Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number four in the amount of $415,679.40 to Civil Constructors Incorporated of East Moline, Illinois for the water filtration facility project for services provided from December 11th, 2017, through January 22nd, 2018. G, Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $16,114.58 to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois for an emergency water main repair at 38th Street and 7th Avenue. And H, Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $10,950.53 to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois for an emergency water main repair at 38th Street and 37th Avenue.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items F through H.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Due to the nature of my employment, I will be recusing myself from this vote. As usual.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargatus.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Ship.
Yes.
Clark.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 12.
Claims for the weeks of January 19th through January 25th in the amount of $2,628,819.85. January 26th through February 1st in the amount of $399,082.06. And February 2nd through February 8th in the amount of $657,660.95. And payroll for the weeks of January 15th through January 28th in the amount of $1,471,988.29.
Move to allow the claims and payroll.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargatus.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 13.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the purchase of replacement chains for the wastewater treatment plant, Fine Screens from Headworks International Incorporated of Houston, Texas, in the amount of $69,110.73.
Move to approve the purchase as recommended. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I had a question. I don't know if Larry needs to come all the way up here, if he's here or not.
here or not. Did, did we solicit several bids for this, or did it just go to a single manufacturer, like the manufacturer of the equipment that the filters are for? How many, I guess how many companies bid on it?
There were no bids solicited, this is a sole proprietary design, therefore they're the only ones that provide the, the chain for this particular system.
That's what I thought, no problem, thank you.
I have a quick question while you're up here, Larry.
Sure.
The report that you submitted indicated the, I think the chains were first installed around June of 2014.
Correct.
And.
That's when they first, I'm sorry, that's when they first went in service, they were installed shortly beforehand as part of a weather treatment system project, but they went into service.
So they lasted about four years. Do you anticipate having to replace them again at regular intervals?
No, actually, this was, the amount of material that we brought in from the system with the implementation of the wet weather treatment system was far beyond what anybody thought was actually in the sanitary system. The very, for example, the very first rainstorm that we utilized that system for, we pulled 60 tons of gravel out of the sanitary system. Nobody knew that material was in the system. So as we've been able to bring more of the rainfall into the, into the system itself, we're scouring the sanitary and stormer systems, so we're hopeful that the majority of all that debris that's been in there for decades has now been removed, so we anticipate actually getting longer life out of the chains now.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, could I, roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 14.
Report from the Police Department regarding the purchase of a replacement live scan fingerprint scanner from Crossmatch Technologies of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, in the amount of $11,291.82.
Move to approve the purchase is recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
A quick question for the chief, I think. You need microphones back there in the back of the room, so you don't have to walk up here. I was just curious, I read the report, we have several of these machines, is that correct?
We do.
And so what happens to the old ones as they are phased out?
The, the one that we're phasing out is an obsolete piece of equipment. It's no longer supported because of its age, it's 10 years old, so it's no good, I don't know exactly what we're gonna do with it when we take it out.
Basically junk.
It is.
I just wasn't sure if we could, you know, recycle them somehow, or get credit for them turning them in.
No, there's no credit for turning it back in, it's just because of the age of the piece of equipment, it's no longer supported through repair work or through any technology upgrades, you know, automatic updates.
Thank you.
Same question for, for the chief, was Larry, was this put out to bid, or?
This is a specific piece of equipment that we have two matching pieces, that we use the same software package for, so we went with the same technology.
All righty, thank you.
If we could have a roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 15.
Report from the Public Works Department recommending approving the updated 18th Avenue Local Agency Agreement for Federal Participation and the Resolution for Improvement by the Municipality Under the Illinois Highway Code.
Move to approve the agreement and resolution as recommended and authorize the mayor to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 16.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the 2018 Catch Basin and Manhole Program, recommending extension of the 2017 Catch Basin and Manhole Program Maintenance Contract with Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, in order to perform the required maintenance through 2018.
Move to approve the contract extension is recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
I will also be recusing myself from this vote.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Ship.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Five eyes, no nays, motion, motion carried.
Item 17.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the review of a two-lot minor final plat of the Kimball Complete Care Edition located at 415 and 417 31st Avenue.
Move to approve the final plat as recommended, subject to obtaining all required signatures on subdivision plat certificates and conforming to the requirements in the zoning and subdivision ordinances.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 18.
Report from the City Clerk regarding a request from Kavanaugh's Hilltop Tavern to hold an outdoor tented event with sound amplification on St. Patrick's Day weekend on Friday, March 16th, 2018, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and on Saturday, March 17th, 2018, from noon until 11:30 p.m. at 1228 30th Street.
Move to approve the event is recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations, contacting the fire department for fire and safety considerations, and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Two comments. First, Tim texted me before the meeting here, and just regrets that he can't be here to represent himself for the event, he's exhausted from plowing snow, you know, for a long time now, and his family is sick, so wanted to share that. But also, secondly, I know that we've received concerns or comments from residents before about our outdoor events, not specifically related to Kavanaugh, but downtown or whatever.
Well, and specifically to.
Well, specifically to Tim. But I've also got them specifically about downtown and the plaza too, right? So not, I guess perhaps word that not only Kavanaugh, but it was, it's my memory that we were going to perhaps look into some sort of ordinance or something of that nature, something that we can do to make sure that families and everybody else around these events are more comfortable. Have we, have we gotten anything on there?
Volume wise, I think we did some research.
Yeah, Dave has a little information on that I can send you. So the volume wise, that the gentleman came here and spoke about, I think 80 decibels was not correct, I, I think the standard is in excess of 90 decibels for eight hours straight, and then it goes up from there, but these concerts certainly don't reach that level. This is also a tented concert, I don't know if you've ever been up there, but you can't hear it, it's hard to hear it even if you're standing in the parking lot right next to the tent, so that really doesn't apply here, that would come more to our outdoor concerts, but you know, there are certain First Amendment rights, Dave could go into detail, and I think that the bottom line is, you know, they're subject to being closed down if there are complaints. And if there are complaints, people need to call at that time and not wait till six months later to say, oh, well, there was this concert where there were some issues, just bring it to our attention and.
I have no problem with Tim's events up at Kavanaugh, I just want to make sure that something did come of it, you know, of our conversation then, so thank you for looking into it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We are to other business, 19. And I guess before we get to talk up here, I think there's some people in the audience that may want to speak. I don't know, did anybody sign up on the sheet back there? I prefer to have, you know, people log it. Also, if there's gonna be multiple people, if we could try to keep, if, if instead of repeating what other people have said, if they got something new to add to it, that's great, and try to keep it somewhat limited to time, five minutes or so, just to help expedite the timing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, and City Council. My name is David Levin, I'm speaking to you as the President of the Quad City Area Realtor Association, as well as a resident of Rock Island, as well as a Realtor. We have amongst us tonight a number of Realtors in the audience, as well as the Chief Executive Officer of the Realtor Association, along with our Governmental Affairs Director, Dave Burt. We also have a number of builders who build within the city of Rock Island, and we're here to talk over a number of things regarding the fire sprinkler code that you passed. We, Dave Burt and myself, had a meeting with the mayor and city manager a couple weeks ago, and we reiterated that from this point forward, we hope that we are included in the discussion on these types of things when it comes to private property rights. As the leader of selling and leasing real estate within the Quad Cities and Rock Island, we feel very hurt that we weren't included in these discussions before you took a vote. More importantly though, and just as important, fire sprinkler systems are big business. For sprinkler manufacturers and contractors, government mandate is significantly more desirable than consumer choice. Municipalities have the option of amending the IRC to exclude the mandate, which we are asking you to do. In fact, many municipalities already have done this, including DeKalb, Byron, and Rockford, where this ordinance originated. The costs to install a sprinkler system are significant, and all academic evidence reflects that the costs exceed the benefits. The average cost is $4.26 a square foot. Newly constructed homes are already the safest on the market. Mandating sprinklers targets the wrong homes and increases the longevity of homes more prone to fire fatalities. As new homes with interconnected fire smoke detectors continue to replace old homes, the fire fatality rate will continue its already sharp decline. According to the National Fire Protection Association, the chances of surviving a home fire when working smoke alarms are present is 99.45 percent. According to the CDC, between 1979 and 2001, the fire death rate has decreased by 58 percent. Study conducted by the NAHB shows that homes less than seven years old has proportional fatality rates 63, or 83 percent lower than homes 25 years and older. The public overwhelmingly opposes such a mandate. Such decisions are best left to individual homeowners who will ultimately bear the burden of this cost. 62 percent of northern Illinois likely voters said they oppose such a mandate. Municipalities and counties should consider more efficient alternatives to a fire sprinkler mandate, including an educational campaign. The Realtors are not against saving lives, which we are. All we're asking for is that you give them a choice, which is probably just as important as the mandate that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I must say that publicly apologize for not including the, those organizations in the discussions, it was an oversight, and so we will correct that, but apologize and I'd hear you. Mr. Hodge.
Next.
Next.
My name's Gary Hodge, I'm a Rock Island resident and a Rock Island builder. As we know, Rock Island is an depressed building environment. Developers are having to discount lots to almost 100 percent in some cases to sell inventory. We just sold a nice home that had been on the market for two and a half years, selling it far below cost. Most longtime Illinois residents are moving to Iowa to rebuild instead of Illinois. The majority of young professionals are leading the charge. All are leaving for a variety of reasons, the most important fact is they're leaving. Now comes the new sprinkler code issue. From a Rock Island marketing standpoint, mandating sprinklers at this time is going to present a huge negative PR problem for future building in Rock Island. Not only do we have to deal with all the normal negative Illinois buyer issues, now it will be about the extra cost associated with sprinklers. Plumbers estimate the cost will be from eight to $10, or from $8,000 to $10,000 per home, for a 2,500 square foot home. Most likely, this will also entail a yearly inspection fee by a licensed plumber or sprinkler professional. It would seem reasonable and logical that when an industry is depressed, you should do everything you can to enhance and promote it. There are already several fire protection construction processes being enforced in new homes. I have not been asked in 30 years by any buyer to install sprinklers in a new home, which would validate the lack of interest by buyers for the systems. People will not come to Rock Island just because we have to sprinkle houses. The only way that this will happen is if the sprinkler system is absolutely free. Many more people will not come because of the lack of the added cost. Also interesting to me is that we are the only city in the Quad Cities to mandate them. What do all the other seven city and county building and fire departments consider that Rock Island does not? Many of them already have robust economies, building 60 to 80 homes a year compared to our four. These cities and counties are our competition. Why do we want to be put at a disadvantage with them? We need growth first, then followed by more costly mandates after the growth. Lack of growth means lack of taxes, which means more of a tax burden on our residents. I have two suggestions. One, not mandate sprinklers at this time, give Rock Island a chance to generate more growth, more tax base, and more rooftops. Rooftops will support more Rock Island businesses, which will then pay more taxes, which will then help reduce the tax burden on Rock Island residents. Number two, turn the negative PR we are going to have from an added Rock Island sprinkler cost into a great positive marketing campaign for the city by paying for the city sprinklers. Last year, with four houses, this would have cost the city from $20,000 to $40,000, a small price to pay for the opportunity to advertise, "Come to Rock Island, we will install a fire sprinkler in your house for free." Now that would get buyers to come to Rock Island. The additional property tax revenue will pay for the sprinkler systems in a very short time. That's all I have, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you for your investment and commitment to Rock Island.
Hi, my name's John Locwist, I'm also a Rock Island resident. Have a few things I'd like to share, thanks for, for listening and taking up your, your time to hear this issue again, because I know you guys talked about it before. I have a couple comments, but most importantly, I got a suggestion that actually hit me this weekend when I was planning on coming here, which I'll share with you in a minute. But I think it's a compromise, it might be good for Rock Island to keep us competitive with other cities, and also promote fire safety, and I think that's the bottom line to what everybody wants. I'd like to share a little bit of background on myself, I know a lot of you, but some of you I don't know. And I've been in real estate for 39 years, and lifelong resident, I've had three spec houses built in Rock Island. I renovated a lot of properties in Rock Island, both houses and apartments. Excuse me, I've been on all the housing task force that they've had in Rock Island for the last 35 years, so I've got a little bit of a background on what it takes to sell homes in Rock Island. I am and always have been a cheerleader for Rock Island. And, and one thing that I may differ from some of my partners here, I wouldn't be here if all the other cities were mandating this. I'm really just coming more from a competitive standpoint, kind of like Gary mentioned. You could argue pros and cons, but at this point, it's a competitive thing. But we're in direct competition with other Illinois cities, and definitely with the state of Iowa, for new construction and development. Being the only city on either side of the river to mandate sprinklers, as Rock Island has, will hurt new construction sales and development in the city. The Quad City Home Builders Association and the Quad City Realtor Association both think this will hurt Rock Island. Both these groups deal with new home buyers every day. They're the professionals, I think we should listen to them. I know the vote was 6-0 when you guys passed this, and I went back and I read the minutes and saw what was published to, and I guess I got a question, how many of you, and you don't need to answer, I'm just a rhetorical question, knew that not one other city or the county were gonna pass this plan or have plans to pass it? And question two. And question two, did you know that both the builders and the Realtors Association thought it would hurt Rock Island? Because I know you all care about Rock Island just as much as we do. So did you know? I don't think you really did. I mean, I think one side was presented. But here's my suggestion. When you buy a residential piece of real estate, you have to sign a lead-based paint disclosure if it was built before 1978 and a radon disclosure. What I'm recommending or throwing out an idea, why don't the fire department and the builders, if they want the builders and the Realtors involved, that's fine, or maybe just the fire department, create a disclosure that has to be signed by anybody obtaining a building permit? That would say they have read this pamphlet, that we attach the pamphlets to the radon and the lead-based paint, which would then say all the benefits of having a sprinkler system. You know, there's a discrepancy on what you guys have been told and what we've been told on the cost of a sprinkler system, but names of, you know, you could promote sprinkler systems directly to buyers, and it wouldn't put us at a competitive disadvantage with the other cities. And every buyer would have to sign off on that before they could get a building permit. I think that might be a compromise which would promote safety and hopefully continue or get more building in Rock Island. And then lastly, I know the staff and the city had good intentions, but I think we got to remember that good intentions don't always equal good business decisions. And I and we are looking at it from being, creating a level playing field with other cities and the county, so we can have building in Rock Island that we're not getting right now. Any questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John. And once again, your commitment to Rock Island along Quad Cities, but appreciate that very much. Good thoughts. There's nobody else signed up? Is there anybody else that wishes to, at this point, talk about this topic or anything? All right? Is there anybody else who would like to talk about anything else? Anybody else wants to come forward? Is there any other business for council members?
I just wanted to make a comment on the people who...
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there somebody? Jim?
I just want to thank Alderman Parker for your work on this issue.
Thank you. No problem.
The resolution.
Mm-hmm. Did you have something?
I would just want, like you, thanking the builders and the Realtors for coming tonight and sharing your viewpoints. Personally, I don't think we took enough time to look at all the viewpoints. We did look at a lot. We looked at lots of reports, and I've still been reading reports as they come to me through the email. But we do have an opportunity still, I feel, to work with you to come out with some sort of satisfactory solution. Now, we can't clear it all up tonight here in this meeting, but if enough aldermen are willing to take a second look to determine whether or not there are any changes that we want to make in conjunction with other stakeholders in the community, I think we should consider that. I'm just expressing my opinion.
Thank you. I guess I have three comments related to the fire, residential fire sprinkle issue. There's been lots of emailing back and forth with individual home builders in the Quad Cities area. And out of all of that and discussion with my fellow council members, and out of it, I guess I have three main points. One, I have expressed to my fellow council members that I would like to limit this council's ability to what I call fast-track ordinance changes. In our code of ordinances, we are allowed to pass an ordinance without a second public reading if two-thirds of the aldermen vote on it. I would like to either remove that or significantly, you know, limit its cases of being utilized. I think a lot of this could have been avoided if we would have had a second reading so that you individuals could be here prior to, you know, instead of being here after the change has been made. I think it's simply just a good government move, a transparent government move, and I would ask my fellow council members to consider it. And if you support it, let city manager Randy or the mayor know. Number two, also out of this, I think it's time that the local governments of the Quad Cities get serious about the constant talk about regionalism. It is time that we establish an intergovernmental council between the local levels of government here in the Quad Cities, the cities, both on the Iowa and the Illinois side, townships, counties. I don't know how expansive or exhaustive we want it to be, but everybody, the QC Chamber of Commerce, people in the business community are always harping about regionalism, yet we have no apparatus or mechanism that allows our governing bodies to communicate with one another. I don't know if you want to think of it as a EU or a UN or whatever of the Quad Cities, but I've spoken to a few council members of Davenport City Council about this, and they like the idea. And I think it's time that we need to establish an intergovernmental agency to explore things like standardized building codes, ways in which we can leverage tax dollars to do real economic development for the Quad Cities area like we keep on talking about. It's high time that we do that. I hope this council will be having its goal-setting session here later this year. I hope it can be part of the conversation then. If not before then, again, if my fellow council members support that idea, please express that to the mayor and city manager tweet. And then, mayor and city manager tweet, please start reaching out to our fellow Quad Cities to garner their support. We need to have a meeting. We need to establish something here. There are other communities in Illinois that have these intergovernmental agencies or cooperatives or whatever you want to call them. We need one here in the Quad Cities. Now, third, and finally, I am sympathetic, and I'm listening to the realtors and the home builders here in the Quad Cities. We do have to remain competitive, and we have to remain conscious of the fact that Rock Island lacks when compared to Iowa specifically in new home construction. However, I am also frustrated because there was very little, you could argue no new home construction in Rock Island from the Home Builders Association prior to this new fire code. And to argue that we need to remove the fire code or the, you know, the residential sprinkler system, and that will spur home construction in Rock Island seems baseless, because it wasn't there six months ago, and there was no home builders beating on the door to build here. So I think we have to take into consideration that there is more to this than the fire sprinkler requirement. Admittedly, I understand that requiring residential fire sprinklers is, as I've heard from one home builder, the nail in the coffin for home construction in Rock Island. But frankly, we need to be honest. I know that in this meeting that David spoke about, or I believe in this meeting that David spoke about, we discussed, we being the city and the Home Builders Association, discussed a lot behind McDonald's on 11th Street and said, hey, here's a lot. If the city considers doing something like property rebates to pay for the sprinkler system, build a home there. And the reaction was, wow, you know, the demographics and the property taxes, and there was a lot of excuses starting happening there. And admittedly, all of those are, they prevent home construction in Rock Island. But if we're going to have an honest conversation, and I think that's the best thing that can come out of this whole deal with the fire code, we need to actually have an honest conversation between the city and the Home Builders Association. Yes, we could have done a better job at reaching out to the realtors and the home builders as to what are your thoughts on this, but at the same time, me as an alderman, I've never been invited to any meetings with the Home Builders Association. I've never been invited to attend the Realtors Association's annual dinner or whatever you guys have. And, you know, please invite me to these things. I try to go to as many things as possible, and I would love to hear from your perspective. We both have to do a better job at communicating, because a lot of us on the Illinois side feel like everyone's just going over to Iowa, and we are trying very hard. I'm 29 years old. I just moved to Rock, you know, I moved to Rock Island when I was 25. I'm a young professional that moved from Iowa to Illinois. It happens. People are doing it. Let us know how we can do better, and we need to just be honest, and we need to sit down and figure these things out. So, thank you for coming here tonight.
What?
I don't think we're having a debate here.
Yeah, no. I was just going to say...
Go catch him afterwards or catch us. I'm sorry, John, I just...
I was just, I just wanted to say, I wanted to look forward. We're going to need one another if Rock Island is to grow. So, we've agreed that we need to have a conversation. Alderman Spaghetti feels that we need to have more discussion on this issue, which I totally agree with. But right now, I just feel we need to move forward. Yeah, mistakes were made on both sides, but now we have to think about Rock Island and how do we move forward? So, let's see what we need to do to make that happen.
I want to take a different tone from my colleagues here. This decision for us was nothing that came out of the sky. This was carryover from our previous mayor and city council. For those who've been up here, I see Alderman telling here, nodding his head. This has been a conversation that we've been aware of for two years at least.
They usually say... They say if you think it's two years, it was probably four. That's why Mayor Schwibert said that, you know, it's longer than you think.
And our current city manager sent out an email today documenting the instances where our intention to pursue this route was communicated to the community of builders and realtors. So, to say otherwise is disingenuous. When we made this decision, I had heard that there was thought going into some sort of marketing campaign to target the mayor and the council for making this decision. We've heard talk about negative PR. I made the mistake earlier when I walked in, thinking that the media was here for this issue. They weren't. They were here to hear about a very important issue about our police statistics, and then they left. The negative PR is going to come from the people in this room. And I'm going to say it exactly how I want. I feel like for way too long, there has been a bad rap in the Quad Cities for the city of Rock Island. And Alderman Mayberry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm going to use your word, haters.
Right.
Plain and simple. And a lot of it's had to do with crime. And I thought it was kind of interesting, tonight we see the presentation by the chief, and we've seen how the crime data has fallen significantly. It's time to update our perceptions on this city wholesale. And I'm taking a rather defensive stance principally because we made this decision, I feel like, with clear minds and faithful execution of our sovereign power. Our staff came to us with clear minds and research, knowing full well we were the first in the Quad Cities to do this. We were the first in the Quad Cities for body cameras, and we won't be the last. We were the first to do this, and we will not be the last. The problem that I see is there is a lack of effort, investment, vision, talent, put into envisioning creative communities, single-family home communities in the city of Rock Island. And we've been talking for a long time, long before we were talking about sprinklers, about the land that we have in southwest Rock Island, some of the most beautiful land in the Quad Cities, where we literally have room for thousands of single-family homes that aren't being built. And they're not being sold because they're not being built. And this is the first time, to my knowledge, where we've ever had so many people in this city hall who could make a change, who could change that, who could make that difference happen. And when I heard, when after we made this decision, that folks were coming after us, I thought, the audacity, sincerely, the audacity. Because it's one thing to wrong someone who's done something for you, but I feel like we have had nothing done for us. And I could be wrong, but I see all the residential development going on all throughout the Quad Cities, and I wonder, why not Rock Island? We have all these homes, we have all of these homeowners, all of these real estate transactions, and then we have excuse after excuse of why it can't be done. And in my mind, it's simply put, you can't buy a new home in Rock Island if there's not one built. And if there's not a product on the shelf, the consumer can't buy it. Now, someone's going to have to date-check me, but I don't think there were consumers going to the car dealership saying, "I want a seatbelt in my car," before the government said, "We're going to put seatbelts in cars, and we're going to start saving lives." Even more than they used to just be from being big hunks in metal that protected people. And I have seen, in my research, how effectively the home builders associations throughout the country have lobbied aggressively, city after city, state legislator, county governments, to keep this from happening. And they want it to not happen here in this city because it might happen in other cities close by. I think that's the threat, is that this is going to become the new norm. These codes were adopted in 2015 by the international community. And I don't think it was some haphazard accident that a central focus of that was fire sprinklers. They're in schools, they're in banks, we protect our money with sprinklers, we protect our kids with sprinklers. Why in the world would we not protect the most single important investment a family's going to make if they're going to buy a brand-new home? And we talk about $8,000 for 2,500 square foot, spread that over a 30-year mortgage, really, what's the difference? This isn't a debate right now. We've heard from you guys. I'm saying, you can look at the numbers all you want, but eventually, someone's going to have to make it work. If someone's buying a $300,000 or $250,000 home in Bettendorf, how is it not possible to build a $180,000, $190,000 home in Rock Island? A $175,000 home with sprinklers? How is it not possible? I'm going to have to be educated on that, because if it's sincerely not possible, then come and talk to us. But then I want the conversation to be, what can we build in Rock Island? And where have you been the past 10 years? Because we see what's going on all throughout the community. Listen. Listen, if we're going to have this conversation, then we're going to have an honest conversation. Because we're getting emails, we're getting emails, no, this is a public conversation. You're emailing our public emails. You're coming here talking to us like, I don't think you knew what you were doing. I don't think you all knew that other cities hadn't adopted it.
Josh, I just don't think it's fair if you're not going to let them come up and talk also. If you're going to go down that road accusing them of things, I don't think it's fair.
Three people came up and spoke.
But then, but you're saying...
I am speaking my business and other business, Alderman Parker. Three people spoke. Several folks have emailed us. I rest my case. I think it's unfair. I think this city deserves more from the builders, it deserves more from the realtors, and we need to have that conversation because we haven't been having that conversation. And if it's going to take us taking away the mandation for sprinklers to start building single-family homes in Rock Island, then let's do it. Because we build new apartments, we rehab old structures and we fill them. We just sold an adaptive reuse, we're going to, $1.8 million into a building in Rock Island. It's apples to oranges, sure. Laugh all you want. Build the homes.
I'll take one brief comment. I know I've spoken once, but this is very quick. My observation is this. There are truths being spoken on this side of that wall, and there are truths being spoken on that side of the wall. So why don't we get together and sort this out so that we can all be winners? And I think that's the only way it's going to happen.
As long as the conversation ends with, here's how we build homes in Rock Island, and not simply get rid of the fire code. That has to be, we got to have something to move forward, not just, we're against that. That's what we're wanting.
I agree. And let me just weigh myself, and there's somebody in the audience that I think would like to say something to, didn't sign up. But the issue is that I think that we need to keep it respectful, we need to listen to all sides, and I think that it's a consensus here, and I know it is with me, that we need to sit down and continue to talk about it. There are some suggestions out here that I think are worth listening to and looking at. If everybody keeps an open mind, I think we can work through this and turn it to a positive and actually see if we can work on getting some homes built with or without this aspirica system. It may, who knows how it's going to end up at this point. Obviously, today it is with, but I think we need to continue to listen and work through it and make sure that we also keep the citizens involved and making sure that it is a safe place for people to live. So I think that that's the mode I think we need to move forward with. The city manager and myself, I guess, at this point, we can work on sitting down and talking to the different entities and listing if both sides are willing, and I think something can be worked out. can be worked out to try to make this all satisfactory to everybody. Change is difficult sometimes, there's no doubt about it, and we need to take a look at that. Someone's got to set a pace. Someone has, you know, and whether this is it or not, we'll see where it goes. So, I appreciate everybody coming in and being respectful and suggestion. Sometimes people just complain and don't suggest. We heard several different, a number of different suggestions here, which is positive, that people bring that up versus just complain and walk away. So appreciate that very much. I don't know, if you have something, we've got to keep it, so we have to get into... And if you can sign that sheet then with your name and...
Yes. Well, I just, I want to thank you for your time. My name's Sharon Carlson. I'm the CEO for the Quad City Area Realtor Association, and I really would like to call Mayor Tomes and set up a time, because I think there's a lot of conversation way beyond housing that we should be having.
Yes.
And this has made this evident to me, so, thank you.
And would you invite the aldermen also, please?
That, all of you.
We're going to have two of them. There are ways.
Let's just publish an open meeting with the realtors.
But I think there are other issues besides the sprinkler system that need to be talked about also.
There are. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have something to say. I've talked to a lot of you out in the audience since this came up in the last week or whatever. The growth, as Alderman Shipp has said, is in southwest Rock Island. I'm a historian. I went back and looked. We annexed that land back in the sixties. Newspaper articles said the city of Rock Island should double in growth from forty thousand to eighty thousand. Okay? It's not funny, Mayor.
No, I'm not saying it.
You're cackling, right? Anyway, why hasn't this happened?
Yeah.
It's the blame game. The majority of the people that are being blamed for it are dead, okay? It's easy to blame people that are dead. I have been told all kinds of things, because I'm the alderman there and I'm working on this. National growth or whatever that built South Park and North Park came to the city of Rock Island first and wanted to build South Park in southwest Rock Island and the automobile complex out there. It never happened. We are going to move forward. We're going to build new homes out there. I heard what Alderman Shipp said about thousands. There's approximately five hundred and fifty building sites in southwest Rock Island. We, the people in this room and the people at home, have got to get those homes there. If we build them, these young people that grew up in Rock Island, they don't like living in Bettendorf or Moline. They want to live in Rock Island. So, as some of this conversation has been said, what do we do about it? Everybody's had their say-so here. I'm the alderman. I will do whatever's possible. I have rode through those soybean fields and those corn fields out there and talked to those people. The new generation is not going to continue to farm. They're going to sell that land, whether it's through the realtors or whatever, and they're going to Reba, they're not going to Davenport. They're going somewhere where it's warm all the time. We have got to develop that now. If we don't do it, the people sitting up here, if we don't do it, then we failed. So, I appreciate everyone that's came, the telephone conversations. I've talked to some of these people for hour and a half at a time, and I've learned from it. We've got to learn, and we've got to educate, and we've got to break ground in southwest Rock Island. That's where it has to happen. So, that's my say-so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. No problem. All right, we ready to move on? Item twenty.
Executive Session. Five, ILCS 120, Section Two, C.1. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body. And, five, ILCS 120, Section Two, C.21. Discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06.
Move to go into executive session for the exceptions cited.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgittis.
Yes.
Tullner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shipp.
Aye.
Keenan. Oh, I'm sorry, he's the opposite. Clark.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays.
Motion carries. Thank you.